All right, good evening. We have June 11th here. Daylight is shining outside and it's one day in Red Hook. This is our monthly meeting and we have a public hearing scheduled tonight on something, but given some audience members who might want to leave before listening to the whole meeting, we'll take you into consideration as well. The reason I'm holding the mic is we have a system with Panda where speakers either have to be speaking into a mic at the DS or in the audience, so when it comes time to speak, we'd appreciate if you would just take the mic from us and stand at the lectern if at all possible. That way we can hear what you need to say here and on Panda TV 23 World. That being said, I'll take my seat and we'll start some official pieces. I thought what we would do is last month in May, we had two meetings, the May 14th board meeting and then the May 17th workshop. We did circulate the minutes digitally. I do have printed copies here in case anybody had any additions, alterations, or corrections. And I would ask the board whether there are any that we should encompass and change in our official minutes. Hearing none, I would move that we accept the minutes as presented for May 14 to May 17. Is there a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In our agenda there, you'll see 7:00 PM public hearing and then a police service proclamation. I can move the police service proclamation into the heading of when I do my report on the police activity in the month. Explain that in a bit. I think for the sake of things, I don't think the public hearing will be that long on the moratorium we're talking about. Jay, I think in your pile, I gave you a copy of something that has like a bolded caption there, the title of it. So maybe just read that into the record, please, sir.
Is this the...
Do you have it handy or should I?
Four-month moratorium on all...
Okay. Just the bolded part, like one paragraph there?
Okay. Resolution by the village board of the village of Red Hook authorizing adoption of a local law placing a four-month moratorium on all applications and permits for demolition of a structure over 120 square feet and for establishment, expansion, or modification of a motor vehicle service station in the GB general business district. Shall I continue?
That's good.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a little heading. Those that are regular attendees and regular listeners will know that about six months ago, we put this moratorium in place and we created a zoning review committee to look at our wording, in particular with those two points Jay read, automotive service stations and demolition in the general business district, which is essentially the village center. The ZRC has done their work and presented some info to the board. I do feel I need to look a little further at the demolition piece of it. And then the timeline we have to do is for any local law, and the zoning change is a local law, we have to hold a public hearing and we have certain timelines, which we have to have the county of Dutchess rule in on a 239M, which is a process where we show them what our proposed zoning change is and then they comment or not. We don't have that back yet. So tonight, we would go through with the work on the public hearing, which we set at our last monthly meeting. And my personal stance is that we will not vote tonight on the actual extension of the moratorium. Just so folks know, we have one in place now for the past six months and for logistical legal reasons, we need a little more time to get it so it's ready to be incorporated in our law. So that's the four-month part. So essentially, board and folks, we're just extending what's in place for four months. The board has had the benefit of reading the committee reports and I don't think we need to get into that. It's just tonight, we're talking about the extension itself. So it's a little esoteric and nothing too heavy in the sense, but that's where we're sitting on it. Does the board, anything to comment on that? So to be proper and formal, Jay read the title of the basis of the public hearing. I described a little vignette background on it, so we formally should open the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So it's opened and is there any public comment? And what we do is, we do ask if you have comment, state who you are and we would give you the microphone, too. I know our regular attendees have been here for the first phase of it, but if anybody else had a question or comment, we would take comment. I see a hand. If you wouldn't mind roaming up and this should be spoken into. You can stand there if you like, save yourself a trip.
Hi, thanks for letting me come and speaking. I'm a resident of the village. My name is Sally Dwyer McNulty. I live close...
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Are you going to comment on the public hearing at hand or your issue that you want to talk about?
Of the issue. I was going to talk about.
Okay. Not to cut you off, but right now, this would be just on the issue that we introduced with Jay's reading, so...
Oh, okay. I'll wait.
Okay.
I'll give you that as a teaser.
Thank you, Sally. Yeah, it's just a formality. We're not trying to cut you off or anything, but for this piece, we would just have comment germane. Right. Psyched up. I think everybody here knows what we're talking about. I think the folks out there know. So with that, I would ask that we entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. We had to do that. Like I said, usually we go through a routine in our meetings, but since we have some visitor folks who have specific issues, we thought, I think we could let them go first. And if you choose to stay, you're always invited to stay longer, but the meetings run about an hour and 45 minutes and some gets very particular about small points, not big exciting issues. But with that being said, it's not a public hearing, but we could reverse our public comment. And I know you were trying to get a mic. We'll give it to you now. And then, like we said, just identify yourself. I did circulate...
For real?
I did circulate to the board your letter and they're familiar with the issue, but if you want to describe the issue and why you're here and then what we can talk about...
He's actually just messing with you. He's going to do this a couple more times.
I got it again. Okay. Well, thanks again for having me up here. My name is Sally Dwyer McNulty. I live here in the village. I've lived here in the village for about... Do you want me to face this way? Okay. I've lived here in the village for about 18 years. And let's see, we bought our home in the village so that we could be close to the schools, close to the village amenities. We like having neighbors. Our neighbor, our backyard, we abut five different properties and so we don't mind living close to people and kind of look forward to these relationships. And I, my husband and I were very surprised to see at the last weekend in May, we've had a dog for about 12 years and one of the enjoyable parts of living in the village is walking through the middle school and high school grounds for our purposes, not often on the grounds, just on the sidewalks or to sometimes just to cut through to access Linden Avenue. But just that the schools have been not only a part of my children's lives, but also a part of my husband and my life and our dog, Ollie's life. And he is getting older, 12 years old, doesn't walk very far, so that's kind of a perfect walk for us. And we were surprised to come upon these signs. And there were several signs the first evening that we saw them. I guess it was a Tuesday night and we saw six signs that said, "No pets. No pets on campus, only service animals." We hadn't heard any, you know, warnings that these signs were going up. The next day, I was without my dog and I was going down Linden Avenue. I saw three more signs. And so there was a lot of kind of quick attention to placing several signs prohibiting animals when that decision to prohibit animals was made. And so I was curious about how that decision was made, who made that decision, what was the rationale behind that decision. And I contacted Paul Finch. He talked about health issues. He talked about children being scared by strange dogs, about dog waste on the fields. And so, but it didn't really kind of, you know, make complete sense to me because I do see lots of neighbors walking on the fields and enjoying the properties, enjoying the properties after the hours that the schoolchildren are there. And most of these neighbors I see have bags in their hands and in those bags is poop. And so they are being responsible and I recognize that there are probably outliers that some people don't pick up, but I think that, I had no evidence about this. There was no documentation. There was no intermediate signage that encouraged dogs to be leashed, no intermediate signage that encouraged people to pick up that were as widespread as these signs that were just full-out prohibiting the dogs. So I am interested, and also this is village property, is from my understanding. You know, I live in the village, I pay village taxes. So I started to talk to my neighbors about it. And I have 57 neighbors who have signed on to this letter, which is asking that the school take down these signs and replace them with more reasonable signs. We also mentioned at the end of the letter that perhaps receptacles could be put up, but that's not a, something that is, that we're tasking with the school. But in other communities, having ready accessible, you know, receptacles or bags is certainly a, you know, one possibility. It doesn't have to be a remedy, but not consulting the villagers and not really kind of respecting, I think, the, how we all are in this together as a community. And we want to have, we want to welcome adults onto this space, adults without children. And we want them to, and I feel as though that the adults, the presence of the adults is, has been overlooked. The fact that you have people coming to the school grounds with their dogs is kind of, you know, keeping eyes on the community. You have young kids that after school hours are congregating on the school property and when they see an adult, they think twice about their behavior. They may disperse. There are also people that don't leave dog waste, but actually pick up other people's dog waste. They pick up litter when they're there. It's a way to bring the community together, that the school's not only about the children. Of course, it's primarily about the children and we really care about the children. And I even think to myself about how pets are so important for socializing children and for teaching children about civic responsibility. So a sign that's instructive that says, "Please leash your dog, you're responsible for your dog's waste," I think means a whole lot more to a young person than no dogs. I mean, this is a place of education and we would like to educate our young people to be civically responsible. And that's part of being responsible, is picking up your dog waste. And we have to maybe educate all of our residents, but it's good to be reminded. And if, as so many signs went up that could say, "No pets," I think so many signs could go up that say, "Please leash your dog and please pick up after your dog."
Thank you. I know you brought a neighbor, this is your neighbor. Do you want to talk or do you want... If you could, same thing, use the mic and just say who you are.
Okay. Do you have the microphone?
Yeah, you can stand by me or here.
Okay. My name is Amy Houston. I'm also a resident of the village. I live on Fraley Street. And I am a member of the DLT committee, the district level team committee at the school where this was discussed. And it was discussed several times. There were some people that felt that the situation shouldn't be quite so black and white, which I was on the gray side rather than the black and white side of either it's no dogs allowed or dogs with conditions. So I would just like to reiterate what my suggestions were at the time to see if we can come to a compromise. And I was advocating for the fact, for the condition that no dogs are allowed on the school property during school hours or during school events. Because if children are afraid of dogs or something should happen, there should be an altercation, it shouldn't happen certainly during school hours or during school events. I think that that's a respectful stance to the school that's there because it is the primary reason why the school grounds are there. In addition, of course, if you are allowed to, if we were allowed to bring dogs on the property, you would only have to be with a leash and you would have to pick up after your dog. And if there was one other suggestion, if the, which was mainly the athletic staff that felt very strongly about no dogs on the field, at the very least, let us walk dogs on the paved areas because there's lots of paved areas where you could walk. And just Sally talked about eyes on the community. It was just a couple of weeks ago, I was walking my dog through the parking lot and I saw a group of young adolescents. They had, I don't know if they broke into or they were, or the bus was open, but they were in the buses, playing with the buses, honking the horns, making a lot of noise. They were taunting us as we walked by. And as I got around, as I got past them, you know, I didn't feel, you know, that it was, I didn't feel particularly threatened, but it was certainly very uncomfortable. And they clearly, because it was on a Saturday or Sunday, should not have been in the bus, I immediately texted Paul and said, "Paul, there are four kids in the buses, you know, this doesn't look good." And right away, he texted me back and said, "I'm on it." And when I came back, I came back the same way to see if the kids were still there. In fact, they were gone, but the bus was wide open, the door was open, and I texted him again and said, "Paul, the bus is open and, you know, this is probably not good." So I do think that having, I feel strongly, having a community eyes on our property is a good thing. And it's also welcoming to the community that does use the grounds. And I think, oh, the other thing that I wanted to say is that when the letter went out to the community, because there was a letter that Paul sent out, that only went to people that have families in the school district. It did not go out to the full community. So they're really only talking to the school community instead of the, you know, everybody that lives in the village or the town that uses the property and should also be aware of what the restrictions are. So I think there's a lot of room to rethink the issue in terms of where there might be some gray areas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me? You can just stand up and I'll repeat it for you.
Okay. I wanted to see what other community schools, what their policies were, so I went to, went down to Hyde Park and I went to Reinbeck. And at Hyde Park and at Reinbeck, it's very clearly indicated that there should be no dogs on the track. And so, and so within the track facility, no dogs. But on the grounds, I spoke to one of the grounds crew at Hyde Park and I said, "Do you have a policy that prohibits dogs?" And he said, "No, we just, you know, we ask our community members to pick up after their dogs and we, and they do." And I said, "Okay, thanks." And then I went to Reinbeck and also no dogs on the track, but the signage had to do, it didn't have anything to do with pets for the rest of the field. It had to do with prohibition against alcohol on the field, a no, and no one after 10:00 PM at night. But there was nothing about pets in their signage. So it just in our neighboring, you know, institutions, that doesn't seem to be the policy.
Okay. Anybody else on that issue? Let's see a different face.
Just like say that I agree with what everything's saying.
Okay. Good.
Don't people...
Well Fred, maybe since you haven't spoken yet, would you mind taking the mic and speaking?
I'm really proud of that.
No invocation, just talk about that.
Question with, but this sounds to me like a dog issue with people walking the dogs. But don't, aren't we in ti, I said the village, involved with town of Reinbeck and they have next to the baseball field, that big dog park there? Is that still in operation or what's happening with that?
They do have one. I don't know specifics about the town of Reinbeck one, though. Yeah, but...
I think it is a shared facility with the town of Red Hook and the town of Reinbeck. And it's my understanding that there's a fee associated with that.
I don't, I see people just walking in and out of there.
It's free unless they changed it and I think anybody can know there. I did it two times.
Yeah.
So it's free to the public and to the residents?
As far as I know, it's free or at least they don't, it may be a charge, but there's no one there collection, doing the collection.
It is a joint effort, right, between Reinbeck and Red Hook?
It was about two years ago, maybe three years ago.
I seem to remember that.
Somewhere in that area.
Anything else, sir?
Well, however, it isn't within walking distance of the village.
Yeah, we could comment back, Charles. That's a good point.
Tie the dog to the car and stay out.
Now, I'd like to say something. I lived on Linden Avenue for almost 25 years and I raised three golden retrievers there. And I walked my dogs on the field, in the back fields and on school property almost every single day. I couldn't imagine not being able to do that. And they were on a leash and I picked up after them.
Problem, people not picking up. That's your problem. Some places have put little buckets out there and stuff like that.
Yeah, but what we could do, don't steal the mic, Fred. What we could do, we wanted to get your comment in and when Sally first emailed me, it was kind of whimsical because I'd seen the sign, because I tend to walk the track without a dog to get some exercise. And it is a community asset, the whole campus is an asset. And I saw the "No Pets" sign and I kind of left them myself. I thought, well, are the kids bringing pets to school? Like it never, even the wording is not that clear to me, like what are they talking about? No pets. But then I reached out to Paul Finch. We do have a good relationship with Finch and the school board and so forth. And Sally and I were communicating, but I wanted the whole board and Panda and the audience to hear it. My personal position, and I think some other board members have reached out already to me, is it is a community asset. I want people to be clear, it's not a village ordinance. Some of the description, some people half-listening might think it's something the village passed, but it's a school grounds issue and people using that acronym, DLT. And then the school board, I guess, would have had to vote. I'm not sure if they voted or how it happened, to be honest. But I would, in the regular business section of our meeting, I think we'll talk about, I would like to be authorized on behalf of the village board to send a letter raising that they should mimic something like our leash law and our dog control laws. I told Sally, I'm not too keen on the school providing a bin for waste in bags. That can get pretty funky, especially this time of year and it'd be another chore for janitors and different things. But if you're a dog owner, walk in, walk out, carry in, carry out would seem to work for me. And Amy's suggestion, I don't think a lot of people should be on the campus during school hours anyway. It's a place for kids and young adults and, but I think we'll...
Have you all been to the school board with us before?
The school board meeting is on Wednesday and they are aware of the, myself and my neighbors' concerns. They have the list of concerned neighbors and they have the letter. I also sent it to the DLT. Their meeting was moved from the 11th to the 18th. So I'll go to the board meeting first and then the DLT next week.
Cameraman, did you pick any of that up or should we repeat it? You got it? Okay.
Because it's their policy, right, that said this?
This is their policy, yes. It says, the initials at the bottom of the signs are Red Hook School District, Red Hook Center School District, yes. That's actually my question. Who has ultimate legal authority to decide how the school grounds are used? Is it the school, the village, the town?
Let me repeat the question, just in case you didn't get it. The question was, in the end, who has ultimate authority over use and prohibitions of use at the school grounds? Is it the town, the village, or the school? The answer is, it's private property by definition. It's not Village of Red Hook, municipal property. But it's, to me, it's a separate, like a sister municipality, so they should listen to their colleagues in the other municipalities. And I think the sentiment you conveyed is, it's a campus, it's in the village center, they pay no taxes, we pay a lot of taxes to them, I think they should listen to us. It's a nice, quiet, safe place to walk. The views are astounding, especially at sunset time. It's an unbelievable place.
I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
So as far as the enforcement of any policy, say there's a dog that deposits waste on the ground and it's against school policy, who is the entity that would enforce any prohibitions or...
I have to believe that would be the village police. Would be the enforcers.
Yeah, and I kind of think it's a little more gray. It's like going into your backyard and saying, "Your dog went in your backyard." It's...
I'm just curious.
But it's curious.
There has to be somebody that has the enforcement authority.
I'm just curious now, so if there's a sign up there that says, "No pets allowed," and there's someone with a pet, so what does, what happens?
Well, the flip side of the question, there probably is no real enforcement. We're not going to go, it's not a village ordinance. We have no authority to enforce anything but state law, village law, you know, so we couldn't. But I think if they mimic the village law and keep it the same spirit, it would be a known, you know, consistent with what it's on the street versus the sidewalk in their property, that to me would be the answer. And then, I just think they jumped the gun and went ahead of the curve and now they're getting the backlash and they deserve it. So in the regular business, I think I would ask, like I said, the board, we would craft something. I think we have consensus that it's abrupt and it's strong. It's an overreach, it's not in community spirit and we would try to do something. And I did talk to Finch. He did write back, "Oh, it's for health reasons." But I'm like, nah, I don't buy that. It's like, the dog, if the owner cleans up after the dog, it's, there's no issue. And I don't see that many dogs. I walk there probably three or four nights a week and I don't see packs of dogs or unleashed dogs or things out of control, so. That'd be, I think we'd have to...
School's everything up after the kids.
Yeah.
You don't care if they're over the place, man.
Yeah, she said, one of them said, "Sometimes the walkers pick up."
If I'm here, I might as well pass her on the mic.
But anyway, I think we'll wrap up that part of the discussion and we'll talk more about in regular session. I would envision us drafting some sort of letter that we sent to the school board. And you're going to go tomorrow, what'd you say, 13th, which is two, Wednesday night?
I'm going to go Wednesday to the Board of Education meeting and then to the district leader team meeting next week, which is on Monday.
And we can, whatever we craft, we can email to Finch and maybe you give us some other names of players at the school board. I don't have all their emails, but...
Okay, yes, I do have all their emails and they've been terrific about, you know, acknowledging receipt and looking forward to hearing from me and others. So I, you know, I'm encouraged. And, you know, I just wanted to, for a second, speak to Brent's point about, you know, sometimes, sometimes we have to do our own enforcement, I think, in the village. I think, you know, if I see, sadly, I have seen kids beating up other kids and I say, "Hey, let go of that kid." Or if I'm running on the fields and someone has had a dog off a leash, I say, call to them and I say, "Can you please put your dog on a leash?" You know, and they do. They, you know, they respond to the call. But there was a study done in Raleigh, North Carolina. The dog density was coming up and, or, you know, increasing and a graduate student did a study about, there's a lot of getting, you know, animosity developing among neighbors about this. And so, but these, the signage and the kind of signage that appeals to your responsibility, appeals to issues of health, please pick up after your dog, dog feces can spread disease, this is primarily a school and we want to share it with our neighbors. This kind of wording goes far, but the prohibition really was almost assaultive, you know, and so I think that was, that was the issue. I mean, we, of course, we always want to work with the school and we love having the school so close by, but I think that language means a lot here.
You are an English teacher, aren't you?
No, I'm a history.
Okay. Sorry. Anyway. All right. So why don't we wrap that up, but we will craft something with the points we've bandied about, but we probably take off that, we don't want them collecting the waste there so that we probably take that off for our board.
But they could have the little boxes with the bag.
Yeah.
And you, you know, carry your little bag with you, just like you do in other places if they don't want to collect.
I think we, sometimes veterinarians' offices donate those things because I know at Abrams Park, we had that donated for us. But no poor janitor or highwayman for our village should be collecting dog waste in public drop facilities, in my mind, so. But anyway, that being said, thank you and we'll work on it. We'll do something. And then while we have the forum open, we have people from the village talking about shuttle buses and so forth. I have spoken to each of you individually and talked to most of the board. We have some news since our last meeting, but did you want to say anything, Ray or Mrs. Keeler or?
Just thank you.
We have a special mic distributor here tonight.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for what you did.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for what you did. We all appreciate it. Not having a bus coming down our street anymore. And...
Well, you can quasi-thank us, thank you. But we, I have a resolution that will be like more formal steps that we have to take to make it more locked in. But I gave you the back, the backstory, pardon me. But for a few board members that I haven't been able to speak to, and for the audience, the local residents on Prince, between South Broadway and Church, in particular, have been putting up with student shuttle bus from Bard College. And they raised more objections and certain things hit home last month. And we sat with Bard, we did reach out after the meeting and talked with the Director of Transportation at Bard, who we've had prior conversations with in prior years. And it went up to Jim Ludwig's level and Dean of Students level. And they listened to our input. And then we did a trip. I got to ride in a smaller version, not the big bus, but I rode around in one of their buses. And one thing that changed the equation a lot, in my opinion, is recently the town of Red Hook reconfigured their parking lot. And the suggestion we offered to Bard was, keep the bus on the public Route 9 road and make your loop in the Route 9 town entrance to the parking lot for town hall. And they did, to their credit, take the largest bus they use and they can make the swing. So what they're offering, in a way, the timing is about as good as it can get because it's the summer when the big bus is no longer running. And they have the ability, if they change schedules, to change schedules until a new crew of students arrives. He did mention that they will have to modify their schedule across the whole system, but they're willing to do that. And we have to do a few things technically and logistically so we can make room for the bus to stop without affecting parking much. And I do have a plan. So we do have a resolution that we'll work on tonight. I think it'll all work out. And so I see all pretty good outcome. What I'm trying to do, too, I reached out to the county today because there's some, the county transit authority, they no longer call it the Loop Bus, also runs through the Bard campus. And when I put to Bard, I said, why don't you guys just have the Bard students jump on the county bus and maybe diminish the size of your transportation department? And they said, well, the county charges 75 cents per ride. And apparently, the students don't want to pay that. But it did pose, I haven't spoken to the administrator at the county level, but it did raise the possibility, would the county take a reduced fare? Would Bard have a card? Would somehow you reduce the need for as many buses? And, but in conjunction, and what I'm putting together is, the county has a marked stop by the Chinese restaurant here, but it's not a no parking stop. So we try to get that in conjunction, put them all on the same spot. So the county bus and the Bard bus can pull into the same little spot and then leave. The county bus doesn't have that turnaround issue that the Bard bus has. And just to repeat, some things we said last month, there's almost about 150 Bard students reside in the village in a given year. And then we do know the clerks and people can watch the office. They come in, those that live here, plus ones that need to shop and get entertainment. It's, they are a crucial part. They come in and they save individual car trips and they support the merchants, the landlords. So it's a positive thing for everybody to have a mass transit. So we are trying to work with both sides. Those that are directly affected on the street and then the Bard student population. So but anyway, I think we have something in your packets that could work. And I will...
Yeah, I was just wondering, too. I know you resolved the issue with the big bus. Is it going to include, you know, the smaller shuttles as well? Will they be turning around?
Yeah, Dwight, I imagine, once the schedule changes, it doesn't matter what the vehicle is, it's going to go the same route.
That's great. And I don't know if you contacted, the other day, I mentioned the Loop Bus was turning around on Church Street. And the driver said, I was told to, you know, make a turn on Church or, you know, the residential streets. That's why I called and asked you about that, too.
Ray and I talked the other day. That seemed like an anomaly, but it was somebody on a Loop Transit bus cycle taking a break, it sounded like, and parked his bus, is what I understood, what you told me.
Well, he said he went to the library, but then he had to turn around to go back where he was coming from. And they told him to go through the side streets. And I was...
Yeah, I know who they are. But when I called the county administrator, I put that second piece on his voicemail. Like, I don't know what that was about, but we'd rather not have the bus taking breaks on the side streets. So...
Thank you.
Because, but, oh, let's see. Where's the mic with Ray?
As far as the 75 cent fee, my daughter was taking classes at Duchess Community College last year. And with her ID, she got on the bus for free. So I don't know if it's something because it's community college and they have something worked out, but Bard could probably do something like that as well.
Yeah, when he calls me back, I could talk to him. Because I did have one meeting with him unrelated to the Bard shuttle issue, just meaning the route of the shuttle. It was more like, why have two buses going through the same campus? Can you guys join up some amount? But anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted, I too wanted to thank the board for working on that issue. It's greatly appreciated.
Okay, thanks. And we'll get into details. I think we hit the first part. We had Fred Cartier come in. And I think you're representing the fire company. Usually, we let them give their report because they have to go off to a training or a meeting or a drill. I see a lot of papers in your hands. Do you want to take a mic from Danielle? And we'll get that part done, too.
Feels funny being in front of the camera over there after many years. Anyway, I'm Fred Cartier. I'm the liaison to the village from the fire company. And we'll be coming here monthly.
Good.
And to make certain reports or whatever, and answer questions, or at least if you have questions, I'll come back with the answers. I've been in the fire company for 40 years. I'm on the board. And you probably see me directing traffic and giving me dirty eyes as I'm pushing you down the wrong street you don't want to go. But that's all part of the business. Some general information that has been requested, and I have here. First of all, the membership is approximately 34, 34, 35. And I did that by counting the pagers that we have. We all carry pagers. And we have 36 of those. And all of them are out. So I assume that's all members. Of that, 36 are fire personnel. 18 are what we call interior fire people. They have special training. And they go inside of the buildings. There are people, exteriors, who stay outside and do support. There's three fire police. And we have four EMTs. And then we have nine, what I call miscellaneous, because I'm not sure what they do. But that's beside the point. We've been in operation here in the village for 99 years. And we are celebrating, getting ready to celebrate our 100th anniversary next year. We're trying to get the county to have us, to have their, each year, each summer, they have a big festival of all the fire companies. And this summer, or next summer, I guess it is, it'll be here in Red Hook. So that's the information I have there on that. You asked for a liability of insurance?
Building was the direct, we have...
Building, right. The building was it. And you also wanted to know the calls for the last month. We had 37 fires and 62 EMS calls. And that's between the village and the town.
Do you know specifically, Fred, how many?
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Do you know specifically how many village calls you've had of each of those two categories?
I was told, I asked that just before I came over here. I'll try to get that for us. I don't have, we don't have that. To do that, you've got to reset up the program they use in the computer. But I think we could do that just looking at the sheet, the call sheets themselves.
Okay.
And come up with that offer.
Thanks.
So if not, any other, any other questions that anybody has?
Yeah, two things, Fred, from here. Thanks for bringing all that information. And thanks for coming tonight. One thing was the LoSAP. It's a time-sensitive thing for us, too. That's the volunteer fireman benefits program?
I asked about, yeah, I asked about that. There was a copy hanging on the bulletin board over there. And I said, well, can I take that? And they said, well, it's got to be up so many days. And so when it's up there so many days, then I will see that you have a copy of that. Okay?
That's a benefit. The two municipalities, town and village of Red Hook voted in a decade ago, probably, where it's a defined contribution. It's a version of a 401K for volunteer firemen. But we fund it. But it's based on their attendance at calls, drills, meetings. It's a point system where they have to qualify to get in.
I have no idea how you all figured it out. Some magic formula.
Goes to actuary-type folks and investment company. But we need the base data to get it moving. But thanks. And then, I know Fred, Brent's question, we were given earlier reports, we don't need it tonight, but if you could ask. It does give a breakout because what we're doing is, the town and the village contract separately with the fire company for protection. And we're just trying to make sure the call volume and percentages match up to the way we're sharing the funding. So when you get a chance, it is a computer run that Rob brought in. Once, it lists address and EMS, fire, different categories.
Between the town, what calls we have in the town and what calls we have in the village?
And we can do the math. It's just a printout. And then what we were doing is, we can separate it out ourselves from a printout.
Well, there is a form, we do have, if you want to do that type of way, we do have the, I'll give you a listing of all the calls we made.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's all we need. Yeah. Yeah, because that's what Rob was dropping off. And then we could analyze it. And if you have that, we'll take that. But thank you.
Got it.
No, thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. I'm glad we met. If you want to hand that to Cindy, she can... All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. All right. I guess we can move into our normal routine, a little out of sequence, but let's go for it. Today, like we said, is June 11th. So what, Cindy, we're 11 days into our new fiscal year.
Yeah.
And we have a rather complex treasury report because you'll see in your packets, one was expenses and fund balances as of June 11 today. And then further back in, I guess on the top sheet, she gave a May 31 date and a June 11. And further in, it's thicker because there's two computer runs. Hope you go in the back halls if you want to chat. Okay, stage, stage right? So anyway, the, looking at it, it's a little different than what we normally see. But if you look in the bolded section, at fiscal year end, May 31, the fund, the general fund had a balance of $271,089.89 in it. Then above it, you can see it's up to $410,000 because right now taxes are rolling in, already in the mail. So they're making deposits of the New Year's taxes. The water fund likewise, let's see, that ended the year with $154,000. And that's not included. That doesn't increase with a tax billing cycle. So that, to its normal spending cycles, is now $147,585. Trust and agency, $35,178. Materials management, we'll have to talk about later, but it's, when Jen reports, we'll go into some details and data. But it's down to $495.75. And I checked last month, the report showed it was just under $3,000 in that account balance there. Village Green has $3,331.78. Hardscrabble, $4,623.84. Health insurance, $4,026.27. And right now, there's no money sitting in the capital project funds. As far as expenses, Cindy did the same thing. For the May 31 timeframe, the expenses in general fund were $113,316. And in your voucher packets that you're signing, you'll see same thing, two voucher packets. The newer one is dated June 11th, year-to-date, I put on there. And there's $70,339 spent year-to-date. Sounds like a crazy high number in 11 days. But the reason is, we renew our insurance policy, which is our property and our auto and our liability coverage is, and that's about $61,000 or $62,000 of that $70,000. So it's not like we went on a big spree or anything. It's just one big expense comes in. Water fund, let's see if I can get these lines lined up. The expenses for the true month of May were $11,333. And in the part of June so far, the expenses were $5,155. Trust and agency, it's like expenses were $35,178. The materials management expenses were $3,208. What I did, I was paying more attention to the fiscal year and part of the general fund. I made a lot of highlights and notes. And Cindy and I were checking on a few things. One that jumped out to me was in the actual tax levy line for the prior fiscal year. It shows us not bringing in about $13,000 of revenue, which seems odd. So Cindy's going to check the records. As you know, if somebody does not pay their taxes in the village, we have the recourse of going through the county who reimburses us. And then they take the legal action that's necessary. In most cases, people end up paying before they head for tax foreclosure. But, but in my mind, those numbers should match up. Something, would you say?
Yeah.
You have to dig into some deposits or...
I did want to mention also that I received funds from Homeland Security.
For what?
For Stella, Storm Stella in 2017.
Oh, you got it? Good.
For $17,846. And that's only the federal share. The state share is yet to come.
That's FEMA, then?
FEMA, yeah.
I'll give, yeah, Brent spoke lowly up here, but this project drove me nuts. When Cindy said Homeland Security, it's the mother entity for FEMA that we talk about. And that's awesome because the storm was actually 18 months. It was the March storm of the prior winter. And, pardon me?
Sent the truck, right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have a motion to, on the books for some. But I think we submitted about $24,000 worth of claim. And they pay, I think, 85%. Some fed, some state. So this is, that's great. It's really good, actually. But that's not in these numbers?
It is.
Which ones?
The new ones.
New ones, okay.
It was put in at 6/5.
June 5th, okay.
But in the AUD, it'll go back. That's what we submitted that.
Where I was headed before she gave us that good news was, if you look at general fund, June 7th, June of 2017 through May of 2018, gives a bottom line. In essence, what we budgeted was 1.884 million in expenses. It looks like we spent 1.801 million. So we have a positive of about $82,000. Like she said, that 20 will get retro-funded, I don't know if it'll go back to the 17 year. We're really going to put that, but it's going to go somewhere. And then, like you said, that $13,000 shortfall in revenue might make that 83 more like $95,000. And then there are always a few lingering, straggling expenses. Yeah, that's revenue, though. But still some expenses. We're only 11 days into the new month. We might get a bill for the prior fiscal year. So, but overall, it's pretty good to, both Cindy and I. We'll answer some of those questions on that revenue piece. That being said, is there a motion to accept the treasury's report as submitted?
Somewhat.
Is there a second?
Second.
En favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I'll go police report. What we were thinking of doing tonight was, I'm told the sergeant didn't get into work today. We wanted to issue a couple of proclamations. We had about 10 days or so ago, two of our officers responded to a non-responsive female at the Stewart's parking lot. And when they got there, it turns out it was a drug overdose. And all of our folks are skilled and trained in Narcan. And we have Narcan in their possession. And they were able to revive the person. And they had assistance from Northern Duchess paramedics and the Red Hook Fire Company with ambulance crews and so forth. I understand the person has already sent one of the officers a thank you note or something. But we wanted to publicly thank them. And I drew up some proclamations. But the one guy went off duty at 4 o'clock today. And I think he had enough work in here today. And then we're also strict on the budget. And they have a, in their union contracts, if they come back, there's a three-hour minimum. So it would cost us three hours to give them a proclamation. And we're still pretty tight with the money. But seriously, though, we want to thank, it was Officer Sturte and Officer Patrick Ferry that responded. And apparently, what it was, just the quickness and the proximity that they could get there that quickly was what really turned the day. And what, about a month or six weeks ago, it wasn't in the village, but there was a heroin overdose death. And this one, they prevented. And hopefully, the person can get the right help and the right counseling and the... the person can get the right help and the right counseling and the right steps to correct the problem and not require another visit like that. But again, thanks to Stur and to Ferry, if they're watching, and then we'll give them their proclamation when we see them play in person. On the number side of it, in that count, that story I just told you, it's one of 352 incidents that they responded to in the last month there. Breaks out 246 in the village of Red Hook, 96 in the town of Red Hook, and 10 in the village of Tivoli. They had written last month 95 traffic tickets. That breaks out 60 in the village and 35 in the town. And arrests were 21. Breakdown is 12 in the village and nine in the town. And just curious, we always wonder what they were doing in Tivoli. It's like an alarm, lockout, mental health, noise complaint. It's lost property. We don't routinely patrol Tivoli. It's just, if we get a call, we will go there if nobody else is available. Anyway, we do keep a spreadsheet too, like we're doing with the fire company. The police department is one of our responsibilities as a village board, and we do break out calls and incidents and tickets by locality, so we can make sure we're charging the town and write them out. We don't ride and work in the town for free. We have a contract with them too. So that's that report. We talked about insurance a little bit. That's one of my responsibilities on the sheet in front of you. And like you said, we've gone through and reevaluated all our buildings this year with the insurance company, and looked at all our coverages. We've got the renewal policies here, and it's actually a booklet, about 200 pages thick, and we've found we have good coverage, and we have a great agent, and we work with them to keep it up. It was one reason we're pushing the fire company, because the village actually owns the firehouse, but the fire company pays for the insurance on the firehouse under the terms of the lease. So they, the numbers, they conveyed some email to me today since 4 o'clock, which looks like they're in the ballpark for what it's worth too, so that was one of our concerns. All right. So, excuse me for banging. Mr. Trapp, do you have enough to work with there to do a planning zoning report of some?
I do. Let's see here. First, let's see, just chat briefly about the Duchess County Planning Federation Board of Directors. And we have the third and final session of our spring, spring classes this year. It will be this coming Thursday, the 14th, at 6:00 PM, 6 to 8. There will be credits given for planning and zoning board members, as well as these credits may be for code enforcement officers as electives. So the class is going to be about mistakes in land use and SEACRA, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And it's going to be presented by two gentlemen from Osterman, Whitman, and Hannah, who wrote the book on a lot of this stuff around here. And David Everett is one of the gentlemen, and the second man's name escapes me at this point. But 6 to 8, Millbrook-Cornell Cooperative Extension. The village of Red Hook will pay for any planning and zoning member that goes. And like always, we feed you cookies and tea and coffee and sodas and salads and wraps and things like this. So we try and get you there, get you fed. And as you know, the Nolan said, you want to have a good meeting, you have food always. So that's the way we, we roll there, I suppose. So this Thursday, I don't know whether you're attending, George? Nope? Okay. But hopefully, we'll have a good many folks there. We've had pretty, pretty good attendance throughout the first two classes, and we will be meeting after this to start lining up our fall classes. We're not sure at this point yet, but we will do the three that we generally do. And I was looking at, in, in my, my other job, my real-life job, I've started writing grants for a municipality, and I came across a facility where you, fire grants are available. And I just started looking at that today to see what can be had, and was going to reach out, and maybe we'll talk to Robbie and some of the fellows down there and find out what kind of things they need, and see if these two, the need and the grant, will link up to be anything that might be of use to them. So more on that as I near in on it. So in the world of the building and planning and zoning, there were 12 building permits issued in May. No certificates of occupancy were issued. Three certificates of compliance were issued. Two municipal searches were conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work, and no court appearances. All 2018 fire inspections were completed for all of the Baywright Realty properties. And there was one complaint, and no order of remedy was required. I assume it was resolved at that point. And there's an inspection report. The planning board, wow, the planning board had a pretty full agenda of five items, meeting 2018, May 17. Three signs, resolution to amend the site plan, and the site plan application for South Broadway property. And again, no business for you guys, George. Sorry about that. No zoning board of appeals agenda for May 2018. And the funds that were taken in in the month of May, $935 in the building department. And it looks like basically a span of items here. So looking pretty good. Again, don't forget, Planning Federation classes, Thursday. I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Good. Thank you, Jay.
You bet.
Just to remind the board and whoever's out there thinking they might need the building department, effective June 1, the board did install and formally put in place that new rate schedule for permits and different things that the planning board deals with. So Lara has that copy, and everybody's aware of it, and so she's working off that. And it's been a while since we did that, and we did a lot of research and updated that. But thank you, Jay. And then, let's see, I guess we'll go to Ms. Norris. Would you like to talk about what's on your program there?
Start with the fun stuff, and then we'll do it.
Okay. Good.
Hardscrabble Day is Saturday, September 15. We're still working on getting a band and updating our website and vendor stuff and all that jazz. But we'll go on Saturday, September 15. The library will have their kickoff, Red Hook Rocks, 5 to 8, this Friday, June 15. Their third annual summer front porch concert series. The series comprised of three, five, I'm sorry, three free live outdoor concerts over the course of June, July, and August. Participants are invited to bring blankets or chairs and picnic dinners to relax on the lawn. The library will provide fresh lemonade and shade tents. All ages are welcome, and no registration is necessary. There are a ton of summer camps going on at the library and all sorts of different, I don't know what the word is, but there's science, there's music, there's theater, there's film, there's, there's a whole bunch of stuff, so check out the library for that. The Red Hook Senior Services Committee is having a food drive on Tuesday, June 19, from 1 to 3, and 6 to 8. At the Red Hook Firehouse, this is for children in our district on the Reduced Breakfast and Lunch Program, so that we can provide them food throughout the summer when they wouldn't be having cafeteria stuff.
So Jen, what is that? You bring dry goods or whatever?
Yeah, I believe, you know, any non-perishables and dry goods and...
Okay. Because I know we have it up on our website and some posters.
Yeah, there's, Red Hook Harvest is another organization that does food drives for children over the summer. So the more, the more, the better, for sure. So there you go. And now onto the fun and challenging world of materials management. For the month of May, we sold $2,678.50 in tags and paid out $1,424.83. We had 12.17 tons of garbage, 4.78 tons of single-stream recycling, and .18 tons of contaminated recycling. We are discussing with UCRRA, who takes our garbage and recycling, the possibility of having to return to co-mingled and canned glass recycling rather than continuing single stream. This is a national issue, not just statewide, not just us. China's leaving the market, and other countries are not able to take in the volume of recycling. But Ed, you've been talking with them, and this is an ongoing thing, and I don't know that it would, you know, that we would make a, a change now. It's, it's just, this is, this is looking like this is probably what we're going to have to do down the road.
Keep, keep talking, and I think we should discuss a little bit here while we're on...
I don't have anything else to say.
Pardon me?
I said, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. But Jen gave me a kind of backdoor compliment. National issue, and I'm talking, she said, with somebody. Sounds like I'm talking with a Chinese, but bad news is...
Did not say that.
I'm not. Nor are the North Koreans. But anyway.
Nor Canada.
It's a, but we're looking at, as far as us up here to think about, and we could talk in workshop too, our next newsletter comes out in a couple of weeks, June Water Newsletter, so it might be time to communicate something. Like Jen said, I've been talking with the director over at Ulster County Resource Recovery Authority, which is where we take our garbage and our recycling. And like she said, it's the national issue, that the market is essentially dropping out of single-stream recycling. The county agency that I mentioned does have a MURF, M-U-R-F. That's another acronym for, they can actually sort co-mingled. It seems like the high market is still in good, clean newspaper. And then there's a pretty good market still in cans, glass, plastic separately. The problem becomes when you single-stream it, the broken glass pollutes the cleaner newspaper, and the smudge inside of the yogurt thing gets on the newspaper. So it's like, and the, the market is reacting to that negatively. You can remember in us, we used to be totally free for single-stream. Then we're starting at these $20 charges. He says now it's costing them $47 a ton, and they just trans-ship. They don't even sort it at their facility because they can't to a site and beacon. And he thinks it might go to $70 a ton, and they just can't absorb that. So to me, the trend would be, we're going to get pushed from 0 to 20, which we're at now, to somewhere up around 70, which just doesn't work for a lot of reasons. But we could move back to our old co-mingle days, where we have clean newspaper bailed up, sorted at the curbside by folks. And then I was trying to recreate in my mind, I think I circulated something to all of you. We had a sequence where the guys, because you don't want to then throw the newspaper in the same trailer as the co-mingled, because you're doing the same thing. You're then kind of single-streaming in the trailer.
The trailer was partitioned.
I remember that.
It was on the same day, wasn't it? Like, I just remember, you know, your cardboard and whatever it was in one thing, and your cans and glasses were in another, but I don't remember this week was cans, this week was newspaper.
I remember the partition, but then did they need two trips or...
They need more trips, because, you know, each partition fills...
Yeah, half the time, and vroom.
So it was more cost-effective to do, you know, single-stream, but they did it all in one pickup.
So that the customer would not notice a difference. You would just, you couldn't single-stream anymore, but you would put everything out the same day.
You'd have to divide, which is kind of a drag.
So cardboard and paper, and one half of the trailer, and plastic and bottles, and the other half.
So I have to sit with the highway guys. Because one option, when I talked to Dan about it, just to do some pre-thinking, he said, he thought it was one day a month, they took all the newspaper, then three other Mondays took the co-mingled, and the gar, you know. And in a way, the newspaper stays better if you can put it, if you tie it up, you know? You wouldn't want your funky cans and things sitting around for once a month. But so I'll talk to him a little bit, and, because what I was trying to do was some other math. When we're looking at the treasuries report, the, the balance in material management is dropping where, but the one test we have to ask ourselves or answer is, the same market change that's affecting us with the rate is also going to affect what we call the big boys. It's, they can never, they can't take the same single-stream. They're going to have to either charge more for that one can of recycling up to, if it goes, because Ulster County does accept Welsh's waste there, and I don't know where else. Royal, Royal to me is the same company. They're the same ownership. So the point is, the regular private sector folks are going to have to pay more too. So what do we do? I think for now, it looks, when you do the math, we probably, Dan is going to take, I said, go buy a clicker. We're going to actually count our customers and see what we have somehow, so we can know what we serve. But I think probably everybody on the board is a customer. And it's still a very effective system, and I explained again to the highway foreman that, that one day of tag sales offsets the need of the general fund to pay that day of labor. So it's, it's good, and we have incredible recycling rates, like I said. But we're going to have to do something, and how do you convert the method? It's going to be hard for the public to get the message, but we'd have to use, the June newsletter could be the best time to do it. My guff thing is, we're going to have to head back to co-mingled and pick up this zero rate on the recycling, and then no longer have single-stream.
And I think, you know, the idea of doing three weeks for bottles and plastics and one week for paper makes, I think it's more cost-effective, but how do people, I guess it's a matter of time before people start getting into which week is what.
Yeah, that'd be the...
I think that'd be the hard part.
Yeah. I agree, yeah.
It seems like it changes every couple of years and throws people off kilter.
What, single-stream isn't that long, with two years at the most, maybe? It's a, it was sort of Godsend. It was like, wow.
We were so excited.
It's just one thing and done, you know, but not working out. And so I could remind Dan that it was a split trailer, and that we'll probably craft something for the June newsletter to start it in, I'd say probably September somewhere. Give people enough time and...
I think too, another option would be, you know, if they, with the recycling truck, to make the rounds with plastic, and then, it's still not a cost-effect, and then come around the second time for paper. It just seems like just a lot of wasted time and money.
Truck use and...
There's really not an efficient way of doing it. Anyway, we'll, we'll all think about it.
Yeah. Keep your eyes peeled to the newsletter. We'll have something there. What else do you have there? Ms. Norris, anything?
Oh, my God.
All right. Why don't we slide to water, Mr. Lang, and I don't know if you want to update. I know we've been pushing some LED streetlight stories back and forth to each other as far as some emails, and if we could chat about that as you get to that phase, but...
Yes. But first off, how about the monthly water treatment facilities report? So for the month of May, the water treatment facility treated 5,906,000 total gallons, which is an average of 190,500 gallons per day. And I have for my edification a little annual daily average flow, and that is the lowest usage over the course of the past year, which is very promising. All bacteriological samples for the month were collected and transported to Smith Environmental Laboratory in Hyde Park, and all three samples came back clean. No coliform or E. coli were detected. And during them, I think it says month of April, but I believe they mean May.
It should be May.
The water treatment plant used 50 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and so that translates to an average daily use of 1.61 gallons per day, which again, sounds very low. So that's the water report.
Okay. I know we did mail out individual annual drinking water quality reports, which everybody in the village received. And then we have, for us, the operator gives comments on some technical things. We're pushing them on.
Yeah, that's good. He's keeping track of work orders and outstanding issues. So I think, you know, he's doing a good job of making sure that, you know, people aren't left scratching their heads about this.
Yeah, it looks like they did honor our request. They, they gave a bigger sheet of the daily consumption that they make the average from. But Charlie, you're right. 190 is, I think, one of the lowest we've seen in a while, and...
It is.
I know we did fix a leak, Tower Street, what, two or three weeks ago? And one has to wonder, you know, what was that doing? Did it finally make its presence known? And therefore, the 190 is a better-looking number.
Aye.
But it wasn't a gusher, but maybe it was below grade and below visibility. But it wasn't a gusher, but maybe it was below grade and below visibility and who knows. Call us for Phase Three someday down the road of continuing water project. Did you want to talk about the LED world? Just to update folks a little bit now. Let's see, we do have it in the general business section too. I guess I could jump in and say, we did circulate to legal at 47-page power authority.
Well, and that, that was a little while ago, so have we any response from?
He wrote back, he said essentially it's boilerplate, but by a state agency, so it takes 47 pages of boilerplate.
Right, I understand that, working for a large agency.
But he did say, one thing that threw me in it toward the end is an appendix or an exhibit that says, based on size of project, they take a percentage of the, the overall cost as their, their fee to handle it for us. Which, when we were working with the consortium, I was always like, well, there's no fee there. And then the power authority seems to be the default point where it's headed, but, and it's, in our case, I think it's 12 and a half or 15 percent. I don't have it right in front of me, but, and the job is. It's one of the appendices. But the job is, what, 250,000? You know, it's say 300,000 overall. So it's, it's a, it'll delay the payback a little bit. I think what they've shown me with that number and there was like 3.7 years is the payback versus some of the earlier projections, but it's still.
I mean, it's still, I think, generally in line with the schedule of paying this off. But it does seem a little bit of slightly bait and switch with working with the consortium and the major benefit of working with the consortium was that they were doing this all for free.
Right, yeah, yeah. And, um.
But you also reached out to the town because they are going through the same process, just a little bit further ahead than us.
Yeah. I connected, I know, I talked to council and I reached out to the fellow Lino, I think his name is, the guy at NIPA, New York Power Authority. Let's just see if I can find. Just want to see if I can find his most recent communication.
We've been approved.
Yeah. But I did respond to this May 3rd note, I'm just looking for, uh, that's where he said, I gave him a current central Hudson bill and he gave a 3.7-year payback. Let's see if we can find him by a different search. Hang in there. This is what Cindy's looking through on paper version.
That's a percentage, but I see towards the end of cost that even if you back out, you have to pay.
Yeah, here's. Yeah, he's got 187,000. But they're still pitching, like Charlie and I just said, I was kind of taken aback by that there's a fee. But let me see if I circulated it. I think I circulated this to you folks.
I don't know how much of that will be offset by the, the savings from the bulk purchase of the fixtures themselves.
Yeah. Well, we could do, our next workshop is a week from Thursday. We could spin through this and analyze the numbers, but there's that 3.71 years I was talking about. A five-year? I did forward it to you if you want to look it over, but for now, next Thursday, they take our fixture count. Anyway, it's moving ahead and council didn't really flag any problem with the contract. He just wanted us to know that, that fee was in there, so.
Right.
So, um, we can work on that some more. Anything else, Charles, from your monthly report?
Nope.
All right. We shall move to Mr. Deputy Mayor Kowalczek. Are you ready over there?
Yep. I'll start with the Village Green monthly reports, current balances of the Village Greens related budget accounts. This will be the last one of fiscal year 17, 18. Community, community edification, we ended up with $2,124.40. Shade tree contractual, we were in the hole by $6,350 and the Village Green checking account is $3,331.78. There was a, um, another number listed, but we did pay for a bench, I believe beginning of May. And that looks pretty close to the number that we reimbursed for. This, this is being bought by the, um, Dutch Guard, Old Dutch Garden Club. So they reimbursed the entire cost of that bench to slab and plaque. So we have paid for the bench to get a better deal. There were no Village Green committees held during the month of May and the Village Highway Department is preparing a list of trees to be pruned or removed along Village Street right of ways. The Village Green Committee will review the selected trees and confirm the required action and submit recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees for consideration. We did get a notification from a resident on Old Post Road about a tree. I did look at the tree. It didn't look bad and we'll have an arborist look at that just to confirm. So we're moving forward with that tree as well. The Village Red Hook Highway Department, the Village Highway Department is currently picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month. Sometimes, you know, it's on Tuesday, but they pick it up. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and place brush debris and grass clippings into separate piles. And limit the brush pile sizes to six feet by six feet by six feet and limbs and branches no larger than six inches in diameter. The Highway Department is also preparing a list of projects to utilize the fiscal year 2018, 19 chips. Paved New York and Extreme Winter Recovery apportionments for the State of New York. So we do have a list we could start reviewing and I'll make that part of my report next month and we can discuss what direction we're going for. No scrap metal was sold during the month of May. We ended up at the end of the year with a total revenue of $3,786.60. And since we started this program back in 2007, $25,998.17 or around $26,000 has been generated. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal, residents or businesses can contact the Highway Department at 758-8600. Leave a message or the clerk's office and the Highway Department will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force monthly reports, the sewer project, Phase One, meetings were held on May 4th, 18th, 25th in the Red Hook Village Building. We have been reviewing and collecting easements from property owners within the sewer service area. We'll actually be facing a resolution coming up in the, in the meeting. Property owners were encouraged to submit signed and notarized easements by May 31st. Property owners who have not submitted easements may be subject to proceedings to acquire the easements to the authority of New York State and Red Hook Village laws. The Village Clerk is available to notarize easements Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And any property owners within the sewer service area with questions regarding their easements can request assistance from the Village Engineer and Attorney. And Ed and I and the engineers and the attorneys meet every Friday from about 10 o'clock in the morning to 2 o'clock in the Red Hook Village Building on the second floor conference room. So stop by and, and we'll be happy to help you out. We also reviewed the outstanding documents that need to be completed prior to the advertisement for construction bid documents. And they include the USDA Rural Development Letter of Conditions, the New York State EFC comments regarding compliance with the recommended standards for wastewater facilities, and I believe that was executed in, in May. And also the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation documents for acquisition of the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant. And regarding the transfer of the existing speedies permit and delineation validation of the wetland boundary to determine if a freshwater wetland permit is required and that our attorney did submit to the EFC and we're awaiting a response. So we're getting pretty close to finalizing all the requirements to go out the bid. A meeting was held on May 4th at the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Region Office Number Eight. Offices in New Pulse, New York to review the required documents and procedures regarding the acquisition of the Red Hook Commons Sewage Work Corporation's existing water treatment plant. There were quite a few people, including attorneys and people from the Division of Water, including our engineer, our attorney, Ed and myself attended. It was a nice, nice break to get out of the village for at least today. Red Hook Water Project Phase Two, meetings were held on May 18th and 25th at the Village Building. We reviewed the work to be completed to decommission the existing Tower Street elevated water storage tank. Work is progressing. Hopefully soon we'll be pulling the plug on that tower. And then we're completing the final arrangements and prepare for the closing on the USDA Rural Development and the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Short Term Loan and the Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant that we did get. So I believe the EFC did close on the grant, right? On the 7th? And so we're still waiting, I guess, final arrangements with USDA to close on that, that loan. On the task force side, both Charlie and I represent the village. The task force met on May 4th and 25th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And we reviewed and discussed Red Hook Town Local Law C. Public meeting was held on May 2nd to address comments by residents and business owners of the Upper Red Hook, Hamlet of Upper Red Hook regarding the proposed Red Hook Town zoning amendments to the Hamlet Business District. This is all town stuff. The public hearing was held at the Town Hall on May 8th. Local Law C also included zoning amendments regarding food trucks, amendments to the Red Hook Town Traditional Neighborhood District and amendments to the Hamlet Business District and Formula, Formula Business Regulations. Public hearing was continued on May 8th and the Red Hook Town Board voted to approve Local Law C on May 30th. And speaking of the Nolans, Bill O'Neill, Harry Cogan and I presented Natural Resource Preservation, The Red Hook Experience to the Pace University Land Use Law Center's Land Use Leadership Alliance Training Session on May 11th. The training sessions for ZBA, Planning Board members and elected officials was held at the Orange County Arboretum in Montgomery, New York. So it's also good to get out there. So I believe that's one more, one more report. And the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, Ed is the Red Hook Village liaison. You want to report on this, Ed, or you want me to? I'll, I'll do this.
You go ahead.
Uh, the EDC meetings were held on May 9th and 23rd at the Red Hook VFW and at the Elmandorf Inn. And they talked about the updates, actions and member attendance at the Red Hook Town Board, public meetings and public hearing on May 8th and 30th. So I think there was a lot of people who attended from the EDC at those and they discussed methods to streamline the Red Hook Town and Village Planning Boards and Zoning Board of Appeals processes. The EDC also discussed and reviewed updates regarding the Red Hook Business Marketing Initiatives. And Ed gave updates on the Village of Red Hook Sewer Project. There were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee. On the Community Preservation Fund, there were no meetings for the Advisory Board. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of May 31st is $1,043,610.26. So it's always on the move upward. The Salkiel Watershed Community, I am a member representing the Village Board. A State of the Salkiel Forum was held on May 10th in the Red Hook Town Hall. The following items were presented and discussed, including bacteria from sewage and its impact on the watershed, nutrients in the Salkiel watershed, the effects of rose salt on water quality and drinking water and mitigating flood risks and how these issues collectively impact our drinking water and the watershed as a whole. And that is my report.
Sorry, camera guy. Thanks, Brent. What I have on my screen, it's a little easier for me to read than over there, but this is from our bond counsel, an email to me dated Monday, June 4th. And it's EFC writing to him. Our counsel, first name is Dan, they say, "Dan, this is to advise you at the PFA funding, well, it's executed by EFC and this is with the WIA round three grant. We'll close this Thursday, June 7th. You may inform your client, that's us accordingly." And so our counsel wrote, and it's a modern day closing where we don't have to be there pen in hand. So counsel wrote to me and said, "Please see below, as discussed and anticipated, the new note and WIA grant will close on June 7th. Congratulations." And that, what that means, just to remind everybody is, the Phase Two Water Project was, if you round things, 3.8 million and the grant rounded was 2.28 million. So we have, it brought the $3.8 loan exposure that we'll finance with USDA down to 1.5 million-ish. So it's a huge step and that's why he puts in the work, congratulations. So now there is a known amount that we have to fund with USDA and we're working with USDA to get that closing done. So we'll have it all set.
And that grant was huge. I paid for 60% of the project.
Yeah. And it's, um, what'll probably happen, because EFC was shepherding the WIA grant and their existing loan, they gave us until January 2019 to get it done. The only thing that we budgeted in water, principal and interest, I think it's gonna make more, not more dollar-wise interest, but it'll be more of an interest payment versus a principal payment because we're going further out. So, uh, but we're working with council and USDA and the new rep to get a closing set. So that'll be a known date in the near future. But we were shooting against a July 8th date, but that's no longer in play because EFC gave another extension. Again, not because anything we were doing, it was just more, they were the ones controlling the 2.28 million against the 3.8. So they, they worked with us, which is good. But thank you, Brent. When Brent talked about chips there and the highway foreman has given us some information.
There's some paving projects.
Some paving, crack ceiling.
Catch basins. Crack ceiling. This ceiling basically Phase Two water, roads, the new roads there. So that's a good preventative measure from premature deterioration, so.
In the next, next couple of weeks, we're gonna use them for the in-kind work to get our EV charging stations set in our parking lot. So that's underway. I think the component upright parts arrived. I haven't heard if the pier arrived yet that they.
Somebody took them, they're not there.
They put them in the shed, I think. Yeah. But, um, so that's underway too. And the highway guys are working on it because there is an in-kind match with the EDC money, so. But let's move to regular business. It was funny, I was looking, teasing Cindy when I was looking at the agenda today. We really moved into an acronym world if you look at.
I don't know what any of this is.
I know. It's on purpose, you know. But we have, we have TAP and CMAQ, Billing Department, CEO, ZRC, GBD, LED. But anyway, George knows what they are. He's been here all the time. We'll re-explain. But one is more straight English, English language there. Number one, school campus restriction. We heard the public present and they, I did circulate to all of you the email and different things that were coming up. I do feel that the school campus is an asset to the village and I think we have a pretty strong and responsible dog control law that they should have mimicked. I would think that our residents should be able to walk their dogs as long as they're. I would think that our residents should be able to walk their dogs as long as they're acting properly as responsible citizens and cleaning up after their dog. Two thoughts that came up in the public discourse was maybe the public side, wrong word, paved sidewalks within the campus. Yeah, I don't think the school wants free running, free running dogs anywhere, and I don't think our law is consistent with that either. The one question is, it's really not our grounds, not our direct responsibility, but, and that one question was asked by the audience, most of our law implies that the dog owner controls the dog within the owner's on-premises, but the school's not owning the dog, it's visitors with the dog. But I think we were circulating something, I'm pretty opposed to having a public trash bin for dog waste for the poor school guys to empty. But I would like to craft a letter and go on the record to the school board, even before the meeting, and just saying, "We would feel that it's a campus setting, our people do use it whether you're riding a bike, walking, or walking a pet." Whether you'd be support for something like that, where we just ask that they rethink the process, and we could suggest that they just follow a standard leash law type wording, and--
I think as long as we also, you know, acknowledge that it is their Board of Ed's decision, you know, to create policy, and, you know, we're speaking--
I think they should--
--from the citizenry, but it's, it's their policy, basically.
I think they should have considered us, and I don't think we're disagreeing, it's just, because even with the school theater, they tend to still call it an auditorium, but I keep making the argument, hey, it's a community theater, you know, it's not, not just for school, not just for auditorium. And I think they would listen to us, they seem to be, you know, good colleagues with us on other projects. So something, yeah, not too harsh, but staying, it's an important exercise point for our residents and our residents who own dogs, and if they're responsible, why penalize them? Would there be consensus on that?
I bring my dog there, not during school hours, and not on the track, and not to be able to cut through there is, means that if I take my dog on a, anywhere other than a walk around the block, I'm on the main drag out there, and it's, it's not as much fun if you, you know, the traffic and everything. So I think it would be a wonderful thing if they would reconsider what I would think is a rather abrupt decision here.
It seemed like they acted like school principals to me. Kid, you're a bad kid, you have detention. It was like they threw everybody into detention in my mind, it's like, what?
But yeah, I mean, I'd like to echo that, that's a sort of safety component to it in that it's nice to be able to walk through the school property and not be on the street. And, you know, it's, it is genuinely an asset to the village, that, that open space around the schools, and to start curtailing what we can and can't do, you know, reasonably, and, you know, being able, given the opportunity to police ourselves as opposed to being told that we just can't do something there, I think is, is unfortunate.
If I craft the letter, get it off to them before the board meeting, and if anybody feels so inclined, you could go to the board. I'm not so sure, I don't know, but was it a real board vote, or just some administrative decision based on input? Yeah, I haven't heard the details, but it didn't sound like it was a board vote from what I was hearing from the audience, but I don't know if they would know. So, so, just, we could say the motion, the mayor's authorized to craft the letter stating that we view it as an open campus, and any restrictions on pet walking should be consistent with the village law, the village leash law, and cleanup after your pet, something to incorporate that, and--
All move.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bard Transportation Meeting, our two prime guests left, but what I could update all of you on, I hinted at with them, but we did meet with the Bard Transport people, they had consulted with folks other than transportation. They can run the shuttle and stay on Route 9 with that change in the Town Hall. The town indicated as long as the bus can make the swing, they were okay with it, and the way I look at it, that is public property, and that was one of the downfalls earlier, we had been looking in the past for where can we turn that bus without getting it into private property. There was no solution. They were cooperative, they listened, and what I put, I crafted something, they did restate that approximately 150 Bard students live in the village and travel to the campus daily for classes. Then we have the reverse flow of kids coming to visit the merchants and food places here. And then they do provide it as a cost-free, that was one thing that came up versus the county transit bus, and they say it carries about 300 students per day to the village. And I see it, like we said at the last meeting, it does reduce the need for private passenger vehicle traffic, and therefore reduces pollution and traffic in the village. And the students, the resident students are, they need the transportation, it mutually benefits them and us as I see it. I did reach out to the new commissioner, that might not be the right word, administrator of Dutchess County Public Transit, but we haven't matched up to talk face-to-face. You know, explore with him if they could look at a reduced ride rate, but it won't forego the Bard Shuttle, it might just give an ability to cut less shuttles, cut to less shuttles, rather. And the big thing is, with us shutting down the print side, they'll stay, the shuttle route will have to be adjusted and move from the side streets to the main Route 9 corridor. And to do that, what I want to do is, we sat with the Bard fellow, and right in front of Village Hall, it's hardly ever used for parking, and there's already an upright sign there that says "two-hour parking." And I talked to the Highway Foreman, too, we could have the bus pull off there and discharge southbound, then it'll head to the town lot, turn around, come back northbound, and they could stop over in front of the credit union. We have a sign there that says "no parking here to corner," which is ambiguous, and really nobody ever parks anywhere there, and we could mount a similar sign there, "bus stop, shuttle stop, Bard," something with the words in it. But to be upfront, we'd have to codify it, you know, which would take a little bit of timeline with us, like any law change. And, you know, we'd have to name, you know, 75 feet here, and whatever, 75 feet there. But looking at it with the Highway Foreman, he feels it would work here, would work there, and then it could be a third or an ancillary stop. Apparently, a lot of students get off and on over at the Church Street corner was one reason they cut down that way. There's a lot of apartments right on that West Market Street area, and there is a spot in front of, it's right at the corner of St. John's and West Market, it's tagged "no parking here to corner," and it's, but it's in a more private area, I would say, like the adjoining business is a law firm there. And where would the students congregate? It's more like sidewalk. Whereas here, we have in front of the Village Hall, we have some benches, and we have a trash receptacle, and we have a camera, and across the street, it's a wide plaza, too, for people to stand in front of the credit union area there, where you wouldn't be like crunched on a sidewalk. Whereas over by the law firm building, it's more just of a sidewalk there. But Bard did seem interested in having the bus able to stop there. So what I crafted, something to get us moving forward, and on the Bard side, what they would have to do, like I mentioned earlier, right now they're on a 40-minute schedule, the early morning does not go down to Hannaford, but then midday to late afternoon, they, the route does turn around to Hannaford, so they wouldn't even be using the town for those midday type stops. And, but this would be every run, you know, it's not, we did have some ideas, should we run some down the side street and cut others off after a certain hour? But this, this can work keeping them out on the main drag, and--
Is this going to disrupt traffic, though? If the bus stops are--
Well, there's--
Is there a space for the bus to pull over and traffic to continue through, or will that then stop traffic?
Well, it won't stop traffic, but it will be a bus pulling off, so you'll have to slow down while the bus pulls off and gets out of the way, and then he'll have to pull out.
So you'll be able to go past the bus?
Oh, you can.
You can, okay.
The loop bus, the loop bus does that now.
Yeah.
You have to be slow.
Right, yeah, I mean, obviously, but I just didn't know if you're stuck behind a bus.
No, no. No, it can pull. It was really odd today, it wasn't a Bard bus, but I came in here, sitting up for the meeting, and it was some sort of transit shuttle bus with bike racks on the front, but it didn't say Dutchess County, and it was parked there, and I was watching, and even a big DJ Vosport truck got past them, so it was, I was like, wow.
It's County buses, it's got bicycles.
Yeah, but it wasn't that weird blue, you know, it was like, just kind of a white color, like--
Well, they're doing EFTs.
They might, might have been a replacement or something, but it's, but anyway, it was there. But they would have to change their schedule, and like I was saying, in the earlier phase, if there was a good time to do that, it's now, when it's the summer, and there's not a big demand, and they can get the word out. And so I told him, I would talk to the board, him being the director of transit, like I said, I did call the county, but to me, the county's a side story, you know, if we can do something with them, that's good, but it's not going to change the immediate need. But I'd be inclined to move, indicating to Bard that, you know, well, our intention would be to go that way, but then we'd have to codify it, and, but in the interim, get a sign up, and, but I don't see it cutting parking for any business, because nobody parks here, and even over there, it's pretty restricted as it is, and you got, I guess the kids are in the habit of picking up the north, like if you want to ride from here to Hannaford, you jump it here. Hey, if you're trying to get to campus, you'd probably wait for the northbound trip and grab it over at, by the credit union, you know, instead of hopping here, turning around on the bus and going over. But to me, it's, it gets them off the side street, it's, I talked to them about the size of the bus, and they're like, ah, they feel like they need a 40-passenger bus. They said, based on the loads they carry, they need the ability, because I stressed it in, that that was one of the problems, it's just so big for a side street. But I would like to take some steps, maybe, like I said, I crafted a resolution just to indicate, so we could show Bard, we're okay with it, but I want to make sure, A, we're okay with it, you know, before, before we tell them that. It seemed like the cleanest, best way to, to do something.
Yep.
And I was happy that the town reconfiguration would work, so that was good. But if you look at the resolution part of the wording, it's, we'd have to codify it, install some signs to make a southbound Bard shuttle stop on South Broadway. I don't know if I stated it clearly, but I'd like to ask the county to also move their little tag to here, too, so it's not too independent. Even now, there's, I don't know how they picked that spot for theirs, because you can never park a bus where they have their little tag up there. But when I was putting this together, we certainly know where in front of Village Hall is, and then across the street, there's a no parking area at, we'd have to fill in a blank there. It's called Firehouse Plaza, but for the codification, we'd have to get more specific. And then at that third point, the no parking zone at West Market and St. John would be, it seemed like, they thought a lot of kids, a lot of Bard students tend to jump on it over there as it's turning off Church Street, so it could be--
I think all things considered, it's a much wiser move to congregate out here.
Yeah.
A month or so ago, I was pulling into the parking lot, and there were five or six students waiting for the bus, standing in the parking places, the empty parking places. I was trying to pull in, two of them had headphones on and had no clue that I was trying to pull into the place, and I had to get out and go.
[laughing]
Can you, can you move? And they go, oh. So, you know--
So here, yeah.
It's, it's a little more congested over there.
Yeah.
If the bus stops at the beginning of the street here, nobody can pull in, you know, the cars waiting.
Oh, it'd be old, yeah, yeah.
And so, I think all things considered, this is a much more logical spot.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Seems like it gets, so I did, in the resolution, Cindy would have to give us a number, but we titled designate bus slash shuttle stops on South Broadway and West Market, so--
13.
13. A bunch of whereas's, where we just cite the approximate number of students and the travel rate, and that we feel is beneficial to both the village, the village merchants, the village residents, and the students to have a shuttle. We'd somehow like to get the county triggered to do something with us, but we do need to adjust the shuttle route. We've met with Bard, and it seems to be something they can live with, too, and the town has said it's okay. So in the resolution part, we might need to help fill in the blank here, but be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook will take steps to specifically codify, but install signs to mark a southbound Bard shuttle stop on South Broadway in front of Village Hall, and a northbound Bard shuttle stop at the current no parking area at, I put in Firehouse Plaza. And a supplemental stop at the no parking zone at West Market and St. John Street would probably be a good designator. I think in the codification, we're going to have to say, you know, whatever length of the bus is, plus a few feet at those locations, just so the police can enforce something. But I'd like to try to use the existing, it looks like each time, we don't have to plant a new pole and a new anything, it just will tack on to an existing upright pole that sits on the Route 9 side. And the, the village will direct the county agency to move its stop identifier south to the same Village Hall area. I would offer the motion to adopt that resolution, number 13. Is there any further discussion?
Do you want to change the word "but" to "and" at the end of the first sentence?
Yeah, what I was trying to get it was a timeline, I think I'd like to not wait for the codification, which could be with our legal process for public hearing and this and that and the other thing. I'd like to get them able to start using it as soon as they can. But "and" could work, right? I guess I'm trying to--
Yes.
Steps to codify--
Doing both, you know, doesn't say anything about order or timeline, but--
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Not say anything about order or timeline, it's just, these are two actions that will be taken care of at some point, and-- I'm good with it.
What if we put codify with installation of signs, something? I'd like to keep it going, you know, with the consideration that this discussion, you know, we'll just do the requisite codification, but somehow get the process going. Can you think of suggestions, any there, Mr. Trapper, Mr. Brent, or Mr. Lang?
Good.
Neither one.
What did you say, Brent? I didn't catch--
I'm good with any word you want there. Let's get this passed.
Let's see. Jay, you're our English professor, what do you think? Let's see, specific codify--
And.
I guess what I'm trying to convey is, I don't know, I'd like to get the process going, in other words, order the signs, get them up, and then get our law change almost concurrently. You okay if we do it that way? I mean, it's--
I would be doing both.
You guys okay with that, everybody? Okay. Okay, so "and" instead of "but." Any other thoughts, discussion? Call to vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Brent, you second, all right?
Yep.
All right. Let's see. So we did that, we did that. I'm going to throw around those acronyms, TAP and CMAQ. I had the good fortune to go to Dutchess County, excuse me, New York State DOT, was it last week sometime? You guys might remember when we did the Safe Roosts to School, what, eight years ago? Whenever that was, Brent? That was a TAP program, which is called the Transportation Alternatives Program. And then CMAQ is Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. I heard another acronym flipped about down there called PFLAP, but that doesn't appear on the agenda, it was something like the MOKTA, right, Jeff? But anyway, it was held by DOT, which is where George used to work, and it was probably one of the most boring meetings I've been at in five years. And I see the Panda people smiling, so they're paying a little bit of attention back there. But in the essence, in essence, I was half looking with the Bard Shuttle, Transportation, you know, there's something that the state's laying out there that maybe we could jump into, but turns out the answer is no. into? Turns out the answer is no. When we did the Safe Roost to School, one of our unique situations then, we had a shovel-ready project. And essentially, you need shovel-ready projects. And it seems to me like both of these funding mechanisms, you almost need a big enough municipality where you have engineers on staff who are building and designing projects that are like on the shelf, ready for you to just look for funding and grab. Whereas right now, our operating style is more use engineers about certain funding we know about and try to not, we're not necessarily shovel-ready, but we're trying to qualify and apply for the WIA and the CFA for, say, the parking lot improvements and things. Long story short, I wanted to tell you, I went, couldn't find any money that we could grab at it. And, but I was down there, representing us. And that word shovel-ready was a big thing. Next item, Building Department appoint new CEO. It's just a housekeeping thing. We are utilizing the firm of Z3 Consulting to, to give us building inspector and zoning enforcement officers. They're moving some of their staff around. And as if, we were using, at our appointment phases, we named Gary Beck and James Greaves. Greaves is leaving to do a different municipality. It's an internal thing with that company. We're going to get a fellow, Don Coker. But just to have, so he has the authority to sign building permits and violation notices and so forth. We should acknowledge that he exists and appoint, in fact, on the village's behalf. So his name is spelled C-O-C-K-E-R. He pronounces it Coker, but he's a certified building inspector and a zoning enforcement guy. He comes again through Gary Beck's company, Z3. And what they'll be doing is having office hours on Wednesdays, and then he'll do whatever inspections are needed and so forth. It doesn't seem like it's anything negative or bad. They're just switching their staff around to meet what they need to do. I talked to Jay. Jay knows him somewhat indirectly, but, you know, I think he helped us a couple of years ago when our building department was overloaded. And he came in with Z3 back then. But I put a motion on the floor that the Z3 affiliate building inspector, I guess we'll call him the right name, code enforcement officer and zoning enforcement officer, be changed from James Greaves to Donald Coker, effective tonight, you know, June 11th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pro forma? All good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Number five, we talked about the zoning review committee and the GBD changes. We had that brief public hearing to expand the moratorium for months. I think it's more logistical as we just get that wording changes and in form. My thinking is, I do have a resolution, but we do have to get the 239M from the county and a few things. And then, like we said before, if the board could think more about GBD, general business district, and any demolition issues that we might want to address while we're in the current phase, but you, that'd be independent of tonight. That's one of the ZRC to talk about.
Would we be able to pass a resolution at the workshop?
Yeah. LED street update. Essentially, Charlie, we went into that when he was doing his report. So we'll talk more about that at the workshop. One thing I added, speaking of resolutions, and when Brent did his report, we had, we have two boxes of sewer easements upstairs. We're, we're pushing to get them all in here. We have a few stragglers. And we're reminding folks to get in. Like Brent said, we have Friday sessions where engineers, lawyers, and us are here for any technical questions. But we're getting toward the endgame where we need to go to bid. But one thing, each easement has places for the grantor to sign and the grantee to sign. And we, being the grantee of the village, we get to hand sign 135 documents or something. And unfortunately, there's about six places to sign them. So.
Need a signature stamp.
I know. I have one. But I think our lawyer said, I can't do that.
Can't do that.
You can't do that?
She said I can't. I was like, man, I'm going to be like paralyzed. And our lawyer being extremely technical, she said, well, mayor, get an authorization from the board to sign all easements. So do you guys have all this in front of you? Maybe the malefice, Jay Trapp, you want to read a couple of whereas's and?
Okay, let me see here. Let me get the appropriate.
We could hand it down. I guess we know it's number 14.
Uh, let's see here. Do I have that?
I can send you mine in case.
Okay.
Got one?
Shall I just start? This will be number 14 at the whereas's?
Yeah, please. Yes.
Whereas, the village of Red Hook is establishing a municipal sewer system to serve the village pursuant to Article 14 of the New York State Village Law. And whereas, the village is seeking to construct the sewer system in phases with the first phase encompassing the general business district and contiguous areas, parenthetic, the sewer project. And whereas, a map and plan of the permanent sewer project with plans and specifications for the sewer treatment plant has been prepared by CT Mail associates dated February 15, 2017, last revised May 8, 2017, entitled, Map, Plan, and Report: Village of Red Hook Sewer System, parenthetic, the map and plan. And whereas, on February 8, 2016, the village board adopted a negative declaration finding that the sewer project as proposed would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement would not be prepared. And whereas, the village has been obtaining easements over private property for installation of Phase 1 of the sewer project in accordance with the map and plan. And whereas, the village has received the following partially executed easements, which have been reviewed by the project engineer and attorney for completeness. Shall I go through the?
I would say not.
There's a bunch of them.
Okay. Parenthetic, there, suffice to say that there are a number of numbers here, ending with parenthetic, the easements. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Red Hook that the mayor and deputy mayor are hereby authorized to execute the easements and associated tax filing forms and cause them to be recorded in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a hold harmless agreement consistent with the terms of the sewer easement with the parish of St. Christopher and St. Sylvia. There you have it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
What we're looking at is that one paragraph, they list each, each easement by number that's ready to be signed. And what's kind of interesting, they are indexed by number within the boxes and all the spreadsheets. So rather than have Jay read every number there, we, we concurred that he didn't have to. I would introduce it myself as a motion to be seconded by somebody.
Second.
Was that Brent saying that?
Aye.
There is one small typo. There's an and.
Yeah, the D.
So just so that it gets caught somewhere.
The fourth whereas at the end.
I saw each hand kind of move. We're all pretty good at that. Thanks, though. Yeah, so the good news is on page two, I don't have to sign everyone. I can make Brent sign a few.
I saw that.
That's good.
You gotta ask me this.
Nobody could understand what he wrote, though, I don't think. But I think, let's see. Anyway, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All right, so it's, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. I think we can forego the executive session. We have hit all the things we needed to hit. And we could go to our normal public comment for the public who's more in tune with our meetings and doesn't mind sitting here all night. Do you have any?
Don't push my people down. Go on with that.
She's behind you with a little.
You had mentioned before that the, is it on?
Yeah.
That the fire department, this building was owned by the village. Is it the property or the building itself?
It's a tech, the property for sure.
Right.
And then we have a lease with them for the building. And the way it works is they built it at their cost in 1985-ish. It's, it's in a lease. And the way it's worded is, it's, I think, a 50-year lease. And then it can renew. And if they choose not to relocate, or how should I say it? Wrong words. If they choose to relocate and not stay there, it clearly becomes the village's. But the way our attorney interprets that is, if you're leasing it, it's, we are really the landlord. So the, the lease contains terms of the occupancy and what they cannot, can do and so forth. So it's a hybrid of, at some point in the 80s, they moved from here to there, built it. I don't really know where all the, I haven't researched where the money came from, but it was.
It seemed to me that they funded it, they owned the building, just like down in Reinbeck, where the church owns half the village and the people own houses are just leasing.
No, the way it's worded, the landlord is the village, the, you know, it's, it's a real lease.
Yeah, you call them landlord. I'm just, I was curious, because as far as I know, the village didn't build the building.
Yeah. But one of the things they have to bring, because one of the provisions of the lease is that they have to show that it's insured. And even that implies, if it were to burn down, we need to be sure they can build a new firehouse, you know? So it's, and it's built into the lease.
Well, you'd be, as a landlord, you're protecting yourself because you have to demolish the building, what's left of it. That would cover the cleanup. And they decide that they relocate it someplace else, they would, it'd be on them. If they had the insurance, the money would go to them.
Yeah, but when legal looked at it, we own land. They built the building, but it's a lease to the village. You know, it's, it's, the word is a lease. It's not a, what do you have in England?
You can lease property and put building on it. But usually, when something goes on the property, it becomes, if it's permanent, it might go belong to the.
What's in Scotland, when the lair owns the, is there, what's that called? Would you have a cottage on the manor?
People don't own anything.
They did.
But anyway.
Okay, I was just.
It's a technical question, but it's called a lease. And they, that's, what else you got? Anything?
That's it.
Thanks. With that, I think we need a motion to pay bills. I know in the packets, there is some sewer expense. Did everybody get a look at them? And then there's two packets of May 31 and June 11. I know we got through them. We'll have Cindy work on a few of those questions we had on the report. So we need a motion to pay bills after audit. Is there some, is there a second? All in favor? And then, Mr. Brent, are you ready to?
Get it, baby.
I am ready. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.